I'm zoning commission to order, and I would like to ask if one of the commissioners would offer an invocation for us this morning.
Sure.
Thank you.
If you pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here today to conduct the business for our community that will lead it to a better community. Thank you for the many blessings that you give us and help us to lead our lives, to serve you, be with us as we meet this day and everyone here. In His name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. So we'll move to approval of the minutes of the September 24th meeting. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes as submitted or any changes that we need to be making?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second that one.
Okay. Confirm with unanimous vote? Thank you very much. The motion passes. We'll go on now to the financial report.
Yeah, I don't believe you have a copy of the financial statement in your packet, so if you just listen to me, I will verbalize all the main numbers here. If, oh, we've gone through three months now, so we're a quarter into the fiscal year, so if we were right on budget, we'd be at 25% of revenue and 25% of expenses. Our revenue actually is at 46% for the reasons we've discussed in the past, and that is the fourth quarter contribution from Boyle County and Danville didn't get recorded until this year, so we got double the amount of contributions that we normally would have had in the first quarter. If you pull those numbers out, if you pull that extra contribution out, we'd be at 26% of revenue year-to-date versus a budget of 25%. Then we're slightly over, well, not slightly over, construction review fees, which ran strong last year, are running strong again this year, and that's the reason we're over. When it comes to total expenditures, if you were to look at the page, it would show that it says we're at 22% of our budgeted expenditures versus a 25% if we were on budget. But again, this number does not yet include the Bluegrass add charges for both the comp plan and director services. Well, those will be, should be in the numbers at the next month's meetings, but if you were to put those numbers, which are $53,000, into our total expenditures, we'd be at 45% versus a budget of 25%. But again, not unexpected, and we can handle it in our budget, and so there's really nothing more to update than that, other than, again, next month, we should be having the Bluegrass add charges reflected in our expenditures. So we do need, any questions or a motion to accept?
I also want to add to that. I did confirm with Bluegrass add that they have received those checks and have cashed those checks, and we also started our annual audit as well, so I just wanted to add those two notes.
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept?
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor, please say yes or raise your hand. Thank you. The financial report is approved. Okay, we're going to move on to construction sureties, and Ms. Gray will present the report.
So on the screen is an outline of the construction sureties, or, sorry, these are the letters of credit, but the one on the agenda today is to discuss a reduction for High Cliff Properties LLC, and we are going to discuss reducing that bond to $90,745. Sorry, I haven't finished my coffee yet. So I think that is the only thing on the agenda. We did have another one on the agenda previously, but they are taken off for this month. So this is just an overview of the letters of credit, and then we also have the overview of the cash bonds and the performance bonds. No change to either of those two, but the only change would be the letter of credits and reducing that from, I think it was around $400,000 down to around $90,000.
Any questions for Ms. Gray?
And we've checked and reviewed the construction progress, Shannon?
Yes, yeah. Me and Josh have drove out there. I drove out there by myself, and then we drove out there together just to see the progress. They have utility poles up. They are, you know, more than, we're more than happy with the progress they've made.
Good, okay.
Can I have a motion to approve the reduction of High Cliff Properties LLC to accept their new LLC in the sum of $90,745?
I'd like to make that motion based upon the information presented today.
Thank you, Sam. May I get a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Carrie? All those in favor, please say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes.
Will you also add to that motion to allow me to sign for that reduction in the contract?
Rather than having...
No, not, yes.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Sally, not me.
Okay, yeah. That's where I was confused.
Is that acceptable in your motion, Sam?
Yes, I would like to make, that included a motion to allow our chairman to sign.
I'll include my second.
Okay. And everyone all right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Unanimous vote. Let's move on to the subdivision approvals.
Can we do the cash bonds look at for a minute?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. So it's up there on the screen as well.
Oh, okay.
I noticed all these cash bonds are past their project status date.
Yes, and that is something that we actually want to discuss coming up here soon.
Where it's not been our practice to have to call these bonds regularly, but I think the fact that we have a couple of them that are at this stage merits a discussion. We'll bring that to you next meeting, I anticipate.
Okay, because, yeah, they expired the end of June and the end of July, so it's been, it's not just a month, not just expiring today. So I'd like to, I agree, bring it up in the next discussion on what we should do.
Not only addressing these particular cases, but we have in the works a change to our subregs to help address this problem going forward, so.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay, is that sound clear?
Do I need to make a motion that we can browse in or just have the notes? Is that adequate? Be in our meeting minutes?
It'll be in the minutes, and we'll bring you actionable items next time.
Okay. I'm satisfied.
Thank you.
Anything else in regards to the sureties or related matters? Okay, all right, now we'll go ahead and move to subdivision approvals, and Ms. Gray is going to present an application.
So the first application is the Keith Shannon and Mike Graves plat. They have applied for the subdivision of a 6 point, or .691 and a .988 acre parcel located at 112 North Braxton Drive in Perryville. It's northeast of Perryville, and the property is currently zoned single family. We have talked about this, I think, at two different committee meetings at this point, so it's been tabled twice. And in tech review, we also talked about it as well, and I think in tech review, our decision was to go ahead and approve it on the condition that the city and utilities sign it as well, and they do have those signatures. So I think that was the decision made in tech review, that we go ahead with this application and approve it, based on the fact that utilities and the city will have to sign it, because there is a water pump station that they've already maintained for several years.
I was at the tech review. We did not find any, forgive me, we did not find any other concern or issue.
No, nope. Mostly just historical background that we were trying to dig into.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Gentlemen, is that motion contingent upon city signatures?
Yes.
I guess I thought we said we had received them.
They've got them already, but I think it's important to have our, that contingent based on the city side, still.
All right, I'll add that.
Are there any further questions or comments from the commission? If not, all those in favor, please confirm by raising your hand or saying yes.
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 Motion passes. Ms. Gray, you want to go on?
Yes. So the second one we have on the agenda is Red Bud Farm LLC has applied for the subdivision of 6.025 acres of land located on Sanctuary Road, Danville. So this is the Sanctuary neighborhood out near Goggin and out near Danville Country Club. The law, or, the property is currently zoned R1C, and again, in tech review, we didn't see anything that was of concern. Sorry, one second. But we do have a variance to talk about. So in this plat, there was a request for a variance in the, like, purpose statement in the plat, and so we did, along with this approval, have to approve a variance from six feet to five feet for the sidewalks.
Of the subregs.
Of the subregs.
This is, this is an expansion of the existing subdivision.
Correct, yes.
This is the next segment in that.
Yeah, I think it's about 10 or 11.
And the others, and the older, the original had the, had the single sidewalk, if I remember correctly.
Yes, yes.
And so, Ms. Bowman, you and I talked about this, the basis for the variance is that it is consistent with the existing phases of the subdivision, is that? Okay.
Yeah, that's the key element here.
Okay.
That is actually the concern if you don't do it.
Right, thank you.
So this is the first time that we've talked about this expansion, though, at the commission, correct? This wasn't tabled in previous, or?
No, no, this is the first time it's gone on the agenda.
All right. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this and the variance?
Good morning. My name's Kendall Wise, I work for Vantage Engineering, and, you know, a zone change was approved for this property last year, I think. A similar lot layout was presented at that time. Nothing's changed in terms of that. I think the lots are actually wider than what was presented with the conceptual plan at the zone change hearing. So in terms of the subdivision of the property, it's straightforward, meets all the subregs and so forth. The one variance that we've, we're requesting would be for the, reducing the sidewalk width from six feet to five feet. Most streets require a five-foot sidewalk in Danville. Early on, Sanctuary Road was classified as a collector street, despite the fact that it really won't collect that much traffic, but nonetheless, they deemed it a collector street, and so the subdivision regs require that a collector street have six-foot wide sidewalks, which is a foot wider, of course, than the typical five-foot wide sidewalks required on all other new streets. So the existing Sanctuary Road has a four-foot wide sidewalk along the majority of the road. It doesn't actually even go to Goggin Road, which is the state highway at the front end of the subdivision. It's, the four-foot sidewalks are mainly for the neighborhood to use. They're internal. They don't go to the extents of the, of the parent track, and so it just makes sense, too, rather than build six-foot sidewalks that transition into a four-foot sidewalk that actually doesn't go anywhere other than allow people to circulate within the neighborhood. So that's, those are the reasons for the variance request. So it will still comply with a typical local street sidewalk width. It just doesn't meet the requirement for a collector street.
The commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this approval and variance? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to this? If not, I believe we have a motion to approve, and with a second.
Are there any conditions? There's no conditions on this one, then? Or we're just including the variance?
Just including the variance.
Right. And so that variance would be pursuant to subdivision regulation 1.5, that there are no other ordinance of government that are violated. The exception is the minimum necessary to provide relief, that it allows consistency with prior phases, and that there is, in fact, a question as to classification of this road as a collector.
As long as we've captured that in that fashion, thank you, Henry. I'd like to make a motion if we approve that, with that variance.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say yes or raise your hand. Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, let's move on to McAfee Properties.
This is the last thing we can do today. McAfee Properties LLC has applied for the subdivision of 3.491 acres of land located at 845 Stanford Road, Danville, and the property is currently zoned highway business.
Would you put your microphone a little closer?
Sorry, it was off, yes. So let me just start that over. So McAfee Properties LLC has applied for the subdivision of 3.491 acres of land located at 845 Stanford Road in Danville. The property is currently zoned highway business, and you can see it's out by Ghost Pike and Stanford Road, or Stanford Ave, near Avenue of Champions. And in tech review, we discussed this, it's, I have no concerns, tech review didn't have any concerns with this plat. Yeah, I think that's all I have on that.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this approval?
What's the intended use of the property?
The property is zoned highway business, and so it will be a commercial, in this case, a retail use. In the, in the coming months, you'll see a site plan for a fuel station, and that's what we're working on now. But, you know, obviously, we're creating a lot for commercial use. The zoning allows commercial use, and as long as the plan, the planning of it all continues to move forward, it would be a fuel station. And I don't know what questions you all might have, but we're, you know, creating a lot that will have frontage on Stanford Road in the future. On the north end, there will be a city street. We've added a, an easement. There's a stamp over top of the language in that, in that note, but the easements, both the building setback, utility easement, and also an easement for a future, for the construction of a future street. So that, the street won't actually be in the space of that easement, but we're noting that a street will be there, and we're allowing ourselves space to grade and construct the street on this lot if needed, to tie in slopes and so forth, and put utilities in if needed. So just trying to make the buyer of the lot aware that can't, we'd like for him not to build to the, to the property line on that side, just because there will be some construction happening in the future, and we might.
There's a lot of ground beyond that.
Yep.
That you can vision, yeah.
What's the access, then, to the Ghost Pike for the remaining parent track?
So the remaining parent tracks has a good bit of frontage on Stanford Road.
Okay.
So, you know, outside of this future street that will be built, and again, it's future and not part of this plan, but they would also have a good bit of road frontage on Stanford Road in addition to that new street, future street. But, you know, we have, we have plans to extend sewer service to this lot. It's within a couple hundred feet right now, so it would be public sewer extended to the lot, water's on the front of the lot, they have access to gas, they have, they have all the utilities they need to do a commercial development.
Kendall, there's, has already some work been done on the, on that piece?
That, that area that's disturbed there has been a staging ground for the gas company, I guess. They've been, and Michael McAfee could explain that better, he's the owner and he's here with us today, but that space has just been used as a staging area for, I think Atmos Energy has been using it. They've been all over town digging up, making messes and so forth, but they're using that as a home base for, for their equipment and material storage and things.
Any further questions? Thank you. Thank you, Kendall. Would anyone like to speak further about this application or the subdivision approval?
I'm Mark Morgan. I'm a resident of Danville, Kentucky, on Count Fleet Circle. It's my understanding from conversations with the city engineer, Josh Morgan, and others, that the easement on the north end is for both a trail that connects the Clark's Run-Henson Trail, Clark's Run Trail System, and the Henson Trail System with a trailhead on Stanford Road to downtown Danville in the future, as well as for a road, and I'm, I'm not sure how the dimensions of that easement shown along Stanford Road, but I'm curious as to whether both of those purposes can be accommodated by the easement, which is requiring a setback notice to future owners, and we appreciate very much that Mr. McAfee, in discussions with the city, had created that easement. I think it was three years ago, but we certainly appreciate it.
So you're, you're talking right adjacent to the road, the area there?
Correct. Somewhere in that easement, that there could be connectivity between the Clark's Run Trail System, Trailhead, and down towards Bait Middle School, where it becomes very difficult to, to get either a bike or a pedestrian from those areas, the Bait Middle School, the old Bait Middle School, to the Clark's Run Trailhead, and it was my understanding that as chair of the Danville Boyle County Trails Alliance, that there, that that easement was to accommodate both a trail and a road. And I'm just curious, is to, I don't know the dimensions of that easement, whether that's anticipated or not.
Oh, we have the, we have the engineer here.
Yeah.
Maybe he can provide it. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
So early on, when the, when the parent track had zone changes approved, there were restrictions put on the property that go beyond what, you know, the restrictions of the zones that we changed them to, and one of those restrictions was a 25-foot greenway along Stanford Road for all of the property, and on our plat, we have both, we call it a 25-foot building setback, greenway, and utility easement. And so those restrictions that were tied to the property whenever the zone change happened still exist and are still part of our, our site plan for the fuel station that we're doing, and so there will be a 25-foot strip of land along the frontage of all of these properties that won't have parking lots on it, but it will be reserved for the city to come along and build a trail if they, if and when they choose to do that. So there's a 25-foot space there that's been reserved for, for that, in addition to the, the green space that is part of the highway right of way, outside of the pavement, paved area, so you've got 25 plus the extra eight feet of grass between the edge of pavement and the state right of way for all of those types.
Yeah, in the tech review, because I was there with you, we talked about this being larger than a typical area that you would see, the 25-foot.
Normally, you know, normally you can build your parking lot in the building setback, in that, in that building setback area, but in this case, it's a greenway. It is, it is a greenway and/or, and can be used as a trailhead.
A trailhead.
Or a trail, a space to build the trail, and that was all been, those restrictions were put on the property whenever the zone change hearing happened, and...
So they've been carried on to here, so we...
Yeah, and our, our site plan has, other than a driveway entrance going to Stanford Road, which is allowed according to the language in those restrictions, that space would be left open. There wouldn't be any parking, pavement, and so forth in that 25-foot space.
Yeah, so, Mark, it is...
Does that address your issue, Mr. Morgan?
I, I believe it does. I think that that accommodates exactly what I was talking about, and I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in regards to this subdivision approval? If not, then I would, are there any questions from the commissioners? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the subdivision of McAfee Properties, as noted here. Henry, is there any other stipulation in that?
Yes, sir, I think it's technically correct and ready for approval.
I'll move to approve.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. Let's call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes or raise your hand. Motion approved. Now we're going to move on to public hearings, and I believe we have a public hearing in regards to Jennifer Paycheck and John Maudlin, Moadlin? Sorry if I mispronounced. They've applied for a zoning map amendment on their parcel located at 145 East Martin-Luther King Boulevard from multifamily residential to central business, and I believe that Ms. Paycheck is going to come forward and talk about this.
Good morning.
Forgive me for a minute. Some, did you, Director, did you have any pre-words you wanted to say about this?
Um, yes, so...
I apologize.
You're fine. I guess really the only areas of concern that I have for this zone change, I think the zone change is in line with both the 2017 and 2018 comp plan and flume, and the 2025 comp plan and flume, so I think this zone change goes well, and in your packets, I kind of show both of the flumes, but my biggest concern is that North First Street, and I'm sorry, I totally forgot to change the pictures on that, so it's not up there, but North First Street is a very, very narrow road. So my suggestions for this site development plan is that, is twofold. We, and I've talked to Josh about this, and it would be a city of engineer decision, but my suggestion would be to make North First Street a one-way and have a cut-through to the parking lot from North Second Street, and I would like to obviously see a very detailed, like, where the building's going to go in surrounding residential, because if we make a parking lot surrounding RM2, we need to be very thoughtful about the landscaping, about fencing and green landscaping, and ensure that, you know, the residents are taken care of, because it's surrounded by six or seven residents. So I think those are my only areas of concern. I think the zone change itself is in line with the comp plan and flume, and has been for a while, but I think that is my only consideration, is that we need to be very thoughtful about the landscaping, especially if it's a parking lot and...
Now, Director, I, Director, I'm familiar with the street. It is a very narrow street.
Yeah, it is, it is.
It is not a typical second, third street, fourth street type of street.
It is, yes. It's, it's an alleyway. Like, I would even, I would even suggest making that just a walking path, if anything.
I didn't know what to do with it, but there's a lot of parking that comes in. People go in the back of that area for the businesses already on...
Yeah.
The, the west side of that road.
Yeah, and I, I mean, even when I went to put the sign out, like, people cannot pull into that alleyway without waiting for people to pull out, so, and it's a two-way street. So, but it is difficult, because the residents on the east side, near East Walnut and North First Street, their driveway is on that North First Street. So I think my suggestion would be either making it a one-way or making it like a pedestrian paseo, so like, making it like a pedestrian-only street, but, and making a cut-through through North Second Street to get to that parking lot, but, again, I think the zone change is in line with what we want, but I think it, we need to be very thoughtful about how we do it.
That's, that's my concern, is the traffic there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I want to make sure that I didn't misread what you had presented to us.
Yeah.
Because it stages for the conversation. it stages for the conversation.
Let's give these folks a chance to speak.
Hello. So, yeah, we recently acquired this property. So I don't know if you can see it on the copy that you were given, but our interpreting service for Central Kentucky Interpreting is on Second Street, and it is track seven. So that's where we work out of right now on all of our interpreters. And we have 12 employees, but we have yet only four spaces. So, back there. And we have the narrowest track, and the counseling center next door, which used to be the radiologist years before that. They have three tracks. So the parking lot is really all theirs, and so we just have the four spots behind us. So we have really good neighbors next door, the Second Street Christian Church. And they let us use their parking lot for our parking, to get our cars off the street during the week. And so that's really kind of worked out. But when this land came up for sale, we thought it would be a really good opportunity for us to be able to put a parking lot there, and then also set the two, the two front tracks could be something commercial. We were looking at tracks 10 and 11, because they're facing the road, could maybe be something along the lines that would really help with the community, like a primary care doctor. There are no primary care doctors in walking distance of the hospital. Pediatrician, there's women's care, an orthopedic doctor. But as far as a family, I think the closest would be Hempel out on Lexington Avenue. So that, I think, would be nice. Plus, if we could develop that property to make it maybe a primary care doctor, doctors make good tenants, that might, you know, kind of be a win-win. And then use track 18 as a parking lot, but going along the lines with what Hannah said about being really mindful about the people that are, that are the six or seven houses that are around it, making sure we have appropriate fencing, so we don't have headlights coming in their bedrooms and that kind of thing. And I was talking with the church next door. They are, they didn't come here today, but they said they would if I needed them to, but we didn't think it was necessary that, like you said, with the updated future land use map, that it really isn't appropriate to be duplexes. We don't want duplexes in there. If we had that, we'd have even more, maybe some more problems just with increased traffic as far as, we have a lot of problems with kids riding their bikes there and stuff, and it's not a really lighted area. And so, that's kind of our plan. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Sorry, if I could, I don't mean to say, I did not mean to say that it should, if it was stayed RM2 and there was residence there, I think that would be appropriate as well, given the fact that it's surrounded by residents. That's not what I mean. I just meant that it is in line with the comp plan and flume.
Likewise, I agree with that.
The request is for us to propose to make it a CB.
Correct, yes. To central business.
Central business, that's what the request is. Okay.
Do we have other questions for these folks?
Well, we don't have, when you're referring to Lot 18 or whatever, I don't have anything that shows that. The parking you're talking about, is that's going to be on First Street, then?
No. And, yeah, I thought you, I turned this in with a copy of my, of our application. So I thought you could have this.
It did not.
I'm sorry.
It did not flow down to us.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm gonna, so, just, if you just kind of look, 10 and 11 is facing Martin Luther King. And then 18 is the long track, and then this right here would be First Street or the alleyway.
Right.
You can kind of pass that around. I'm sorry, I thought they would have that up here. That's okay.
Well, so the parking would be where, 18?
Parking would be 18.
And then 10 and 11 would be the commercial, the potential commercial lots?
Yes. And the idea is, all that traffic wouldn't have to come in through the alley. It could also come in through one of those tracks.
Well, but the street is there.
True, it is. But if it was one-way, there could be more than one entrance and more than one exit.
Ms. Paycheck, is it all right if we keep that for the record, that map you just circulated?
Absolutely. And sorry, I don't have it in my files even here, so I don't know where that went with the application. I don't know if I've seen that either.
Okay, okay.
If we're gonna, if you end up reserving space in that 10 and 11 track, I'd like to somehow lock it in so that we know we have enough width and activity. Because you're right, that one track, this section in the back, is a large about area, if it's all parking, or even if it isn't all parking. You're intending to put a lot more cars there.
Well, and, so, the funny thing is, is that this Lot 18 that you're looking at right now, has been the unofficial parking lot for Farmer's Market, for the Christmas Parade. It's overflow parking for our neighborhood churches when they have funerals, because I believe a few years ago, the Baptist Church, Second Street Baptist Church, no longer has control of a parking lot next door, because I think that's Croker, well, it was Kroger eventually, but now it's the Specialty Center, right? So if they have a funeral during the day, during the work week, they can't park where the Specialty Center parks. So, you know, they always cone off all of that for the hearse and whatnot. So what happens is, is they come over to our vacant lot, because there are will tow you signs in the counseling center, and rightfully so, because they have, they're conducting business with, you know, counseling. And so we end up with parking, people parking just on the grass. And that's fine, we don't mind them doing that, but it is kind of a little bit dangerous, depending on the weather, they tromp through the, you know. It would be nicer if we, our vision is that we'll somehow be able to have a parking lot that's pretty big back there, that we could maybe get a partnership or a grant where we could have free municipal parking for evening and weekends, that would, that would be in alignment with having extra parking for overflow for the Christmas Parade, for Constitution Square, for the Farmer's Market, used to be the barbecue festival, and now not so much anymore. But anyway, because that's where they're already parking.
And I can see that we need, something needs to be addressed. What we're trying to do at this point is decide and determine how that ties into the proposed zoning change, how we're going to tie it in. That'd be my opinion.
Sure.
So it's an understanding of the traffic flow down this small street, the already inadequate drive, and an empty field that people have been parking in. Because I've seen that many times. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Sure.
And I appreciate the offer that you have in here. This does seem to be a good opportunity. But the First Street is an extremely narrow street. You know, delivery trucks of large size have difficulties going down there. I've had many a parade float that has difficulty turning and parking it over there. So I understand where you're coming from.
So I also do have questions about, like, the landscaping. Do you have, are you thinking 10-foot fence? Are you thinking green landscaping? Are you thinking overhead lights? Do you have, are you, have you thought that far in the future about the parking aspect of it?
Not, not as far as the specifics.
Okay.
It would be nice if it was lit up. At the same time, we have people who live around there, too. So we have to take that into consideration. It can be a little bit, we have one light on that alley right now, but it is kind of a meeting place for, I would say, you know, say me some, you know, not so great things in the middle of the night, because it's a dark area. It's a good meeting spot. And if it had more light, that might make it a little bit safer. While at the same time, we don't want, you know, people who live there not to be able to sleep. So we haven't, we don't have an actual plan. But if you went over there and looked right now, it's pretty dense as far as, there's some really big trees on that property right now. So some of that would have to be removed, but not all of it. You don't want to take away from, you know, it's been a green space for so many years, that we want to be able to maintain some of that with the tree, leaving some of the big trees there and stuff.
I mean, my suggestion, it would be heavy, like, heavy landscape and a tall fence. I would suggest no lighting, because there is so many residents around there. But I know that would be difficult with a parking lot in downtown area. But, I mean, I would recommend to not, do the best at not disrupting the surrounding neighborhood that is already existing in the area.
Director, so, process for us, we would be asked here to approve the zoning change and say that's consistent with what the area is, consistent with the comp plan, consistent with the flumes. Would we then also later get a site plan?
Correct. And I think we could add conditions to this zone change, before we see the site plan. So we can add as many conditions as you'd like, and I suggest us a few.
Just seeing where we're going. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Would anybody else like to speak in regards to this request to change the property? The zoning?
It's John Hughes. I live on Bluegrass.
You're good, you're good.
I would like to chime in on any possibility of closing any street. I have three words: oh, no. I just go back, history of Danville. Efer McDowell had Martin Luther King closed because they argued that after 9/11, a car could be left under the new addition if it were to be built over Martin Luther King. Well, they closed Martin Luther King, and now they had that drop-off, those parking spaces. Guess what? Still can park a car there, and it blow up and kill people. So I am totally against any idea. Now, either way you want to make it one-way, that's fine. Just please don't close any streets. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak in regards to this zone change?
Okay. Thomas Rowley. I own the property 102 East Walnut Street. I'm flat against the zone change, period. The idea of putting a parking lot back behind five houses residential, and that long slot is approximately 97 feet wide, about 260 feet long. And in order to put a parking lot there, you're going to put lights back in there, or whatever. What are you going to put in? I mean, we've got people on Martin Luther King, we've got people on Walnut Street. They've got lights in the front of the house. You're going to put lights in the back of the house, too? No. There used to be a parking place back there, I agree with that. There used to be a parking place back there, but it was illegal parking. People just put their cars back in there. It would never zone for that, it was obviously residential. It should stay residential. You're talking about parking on Walnut Street during the time of the, any kind of activity on there? We don't have a parking problem. We have an enforcement problem. On Second Street, on that Second Street going down through there, it says no parking except Sunday. Do they do it? No. We need to inform these people. We need to get the police to inform down there and patrol the area. We need to start ticketing these people. We need to start towing these cars. And that'll eliminate that problem downstairs, when you go down through there. I can't even get through there half the time. You have to go up Martin Luther King, and then come back through the alley in order to get there. No. I don't want to see it happen. They're talking about providing parking? Not in that area. Leave it residential? They want to develop it and put lots in there, put houses in there? They can do that, no problem. But to make it commercial? No. Talking to, can roll over about city planning? A house, a property over there, city can go up to like 40 feet, and put a house, put a building in there 40 feet tall. All right, now, a 40-foot building, and you've got people on both sides. Not a good idea. Need to leave it like it is, develop it, put more homes back in there? You're talking about we need more affordable places to live. We can put them over in that area. Put another road through there coming off of Martin Luther King, put another slot back in there? You put several homes in that section. And leave business on the right-hand side of the alley, leave residential on the other side, and be done with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe someone else wants to speak in regards to this?
Good morning. My name is Dana Hill, and I live at 104 East Walnut Street. I'm a part of the property that's proposed to be changed. I'm here in opposition to that happening. I echo what Mr. Rowley said earlier about the traffic. We already have problems with traffic now. You add another parking lot to that area, it's going to be worse. I live there, and so like, whenever they have like special events, it's horrible. My backyard, people walk through my backyard, they throw out trash, we have to clean up after the special events are over. It's hard to get to my house if I go somewhere, because they've blocked off the part of Second Street that I can come through to turn onto Walnut Street. So that alleyway that you're talking about changing over to a pedestrian walkway or a one-way street, I have to use that sometimes to get into my, onto my street. So I do not want a parking lot in my backyard, because I'm one of the homes that it will be in their backyard. I enjoy being able to sit on my back porch and not have to hear the traffic on Walnut Street. But you're going to add more traffic if you put a parking lot back there, and then if you put medical offices there, that's going to be an increase in traffic. And if you've ever come down Second Street on a weekday, anytime in between 10 o'clock and 5:00 or 6:00, it's just congested. You know, I can go from the corner of Martin Luther King and Second, that stop sign there, and sit there for five minutes to get to my house, which is on Walnut Street. So I'm opposed to it. I'm opposed to the lighting that will have to happen because of having a parking lot back there. I'm opposed to the traffic that it's going to bring. I heard Ms. Paycheck mention that, like, she wanted to put up maybe a medical office to bring primary care physicians back into downtown. Well, they were there, in fact, in the building that she was in. That's where Dr. Hendrickson, Dr. Ray Tiere, and I don't know if Hempel was there at the time, but they were in that office. But they chose to move out to where they are now. And so, where Danville Family Physicians is now, I would think that there would be other places that are already zoned commercial, where the medical offices could go, other than bringing it into a residential area. So I'm asking you to deny the zoning change and keep it residential. When Ms. Paycheck and Mr. Maudlin bought that property, it was zoned residential, and I know that's public knowledge, so they knew that. So I'm asking you to continue to preserve the integrity of our neighborhood and keep it residential. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Thomas Rowley, again. The house I own is 102 East Walnut Street. If you make that road one-way, the lady that lives there goes through the alley in order to get to her driveway. Which way are you going to make it one-way? That she had to go through this way, and then turn around and go back out the other way? Right now, she can come in off of Walnut Street, driveway's right there, and duck right in. She can come back. Right now, she can come in off Walnut Street, driveway's right there, and duck right in. She can come back out the same way she went in. If you make it one way, what is she going to do? There's no driveway off of Second Street, off of Walnut Street. There's no driveway there. The driveway is out of the alley. So if you change that, we've got a problem. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Well, good morning. My name is Ennis Tilburn. I'm speaking. I'm head for First Baptist Church. I'm a trustee at my church. And we are totally opposed to actually having this rezoned. And speaking in respect to the piece of property that's now occupied by one of our church members. And the noise that it would create, putting up a basic fence would not solve the problem with the noise. So basically, you had to put up what's called sound barriers to actually keep the noise out of the neighbors, away from the neighbors, rather, and the lighting, as spoken before. If one other neighborhood is their parking lot, it's not its backyard. I don't think there's one here in Danville. So why would we want to put one in over here if we're talking about rezoning? So we are totally against this. As far as using the parking space, when there's needed for funerals, our funerals are conducted through the week. We don't have funerals on the weekend. And if the parking lot is occupied during the week, we can't use it anyway. So again, we're totally opposed to this zone change.
Thank you, sir.
If I could just add one thing, when we talk about.
Come forward, please.
You're hard to hear otherwise. Sorry.
When we talk about putting a parking lot up there, what's going to happen with the stormwater drainage? Where's it going to go? Is it going to come into my backyard? And it create a problem for me? And I know that my neighbor on, on Green Street, they already had problems with water in their basement. Put a parking lot there, where's that water going to go?
Thank you. Thank you for the public comment. Ms. Gray, would you like to make further comment or answer questions from the commissioners?
Do y'all have any questions at the moment?
We don't have authority to make that three one-way.
No, 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 no. It, it's more of a suggestion. It's more of a direction that we should go into. When I talked to Josh about it, he didn't seem that he didn't, he didn't make it seem like it was a bad idea, but we don't have authority.
That becomes a city engineer.
Correct. Yes.
This commission.
Yes. Even the one-way, the stormwater, that is all city. That is all city issues that we can't, we have no authority over.
If they're going to develop in the parking lot, we'll see, we need a site plan for those categories.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
So that would be an important topic.
Absolutely.
To be addressed at that point.
And our, our stormwater management standards are such that post-development, the flow of water off the property cannot be increased from what it was pre-development. So that's, that's requirement the engineers are going to have to meet regarding stormwater.
But I do want to also state that I don't think either is inappropriate, inappropriate use. I think keeping it RM2 is appropriate, given that it is surrounded by already residential. And CB is not inappropriate due to the fact that it is in line with the comp plan and flume. So that doesn't answer any questions.
So in terms of the zoning, CB would still allow residences to be present in that zone, right? It's not, because this, it's, it's a sensitive area.
Yes.
Because of how it, it's the, the interface between commercial properties on one side and residences on the other.
Yes.
And so how we manage that, you know, both the, the CB would allow for residential use.
Correct.
In that area. The residential would not allow for business use, right?
The only thing the CB takes away is single-family attached housing. It could still have single-family detached or multifamily.
Right.
But I would, I would also recommend that we attach conditions to the zone change, whatever you all think is appropriate.
Yeah, we'll go through the circle. I'd like to hear your comments to that.
I was just going to say, you know, our nonprofit agency sits right there as well. You know, I'm there every day. It is a very narrow road, and I don't know if it could be widened. I don't, I don't know about that kind of stuff. But I do know that it's not our intention in any way to do anything that's going to affect in a negative way the people that live, that live around. We don't want to, you know, light up the whole thing during the night so that people, that is not our intention. Our intention is to build something that's going to be win-win for everybody. That is just, you know, what we want is something that goes along with the area. It is recommended to be commercial business, but like she said, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's what it has to be. You know, we have our vision of a long-term plan, but we certainly want to take into consideration the people that live. There are, there are neighbors because we're there. I'm there every day, you know, all the time, so. And that's just not our intention to go in and, and make a bunch of people who live around there unhappy, so.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So I think it's time for us to talk about if, if we were to approve this, what conditions we would make upon the approval.
Sally, Sally, you're director. Chairman, are we closing the public part of this hearing?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I think that it's time for us to close and move out of the public hearing portion of this meeting for this discussion.
I asked a lot of questions, so I'll just give you my perspective and what I heard here. Because I think the, the First Street is an extremely narrow street. To do anything with it is an enormous complicated task. To put a lot of traffic down the street beyond just the, the local, a small number of parking is going to be a problem to make the whole. And I'm not a really big fan of making that section behind the houses, the large section, anything other than a residential style or, but not a parking lot. I'm just not a fan. I don't think it's going to work. I think we'll have issues on the other categories.
Any other comments from commissioners or questions?
I guess, so we had a lot of talk kind of in general about the traffic flow and parking spaces and whatnot, but no specifics around how many parking spaces, where they would be, how the ingress and egress would go. You know, it's one thing to have a parking lot, they pull in, and then they pull, say, off of Walnut and then pull out back on, on Walnut. But if it's having to go through the one-way on, on First Street or something like that, or have a bunch of cars parked in people's backyards essentially, kind of different, um, different animals, I guess. And we want to, I'd like to see more information about that. Because I, I understand the residents' complaints, but we don't have very much specifics to say, how's it going to look? Where's it going to be?
Well, we are aware that the site plan, if we get to that point, if it was allowed to be done, you would see a lot of those details. It's one of those, at this point, if it can happen, it might happen. That's kind of where we're at. And we're being asked to change the zoning to a category on CB, commercial business, that allows that to happen, is what we're being asked to do. So we could even break, in my mind, we could break sections of this property into different categories of zoning. You know, we're having a CB on the other street, the Martin Luther King, is not a whole lot different than some of the other streets, but their access would be from Martin Luther King, not from the First Street. That would be, not be the intention to have traffic in that area. It is a congested area. There's no doubt that area is really for arrangements and parking is a problem for all sorts of events, whether it's over at Constitution Square or virtually anything downtown. You tend to get a lot of cars parking on the streets there. I don't know that we're in a position to make it different on that category at this point in time.
I mean, to me, it seems that the, the request is consistent with what we've been talking about in that area and the neighborhood. And kind of the, the way this merges commercial and residential use right at the core downtown is really one of the key issues that we want to see happen in, in the comp plan. I, I would think that the conditions we might want to talk about would, would have to do with having some discussion with the neighbors and coming back with a site plan that reflects their concerns so that, so that it does become the win-win that you talked about. We, we, I don't think as commission necessarily need to be in the middle of those discussions. I'd, I'd really suggest that those discussions happen between you and the neighbors so that that would be something coming back to us. You know, address as many concerns as we can.
And you're right, planning and zoning meetings like this and public hearings is a time to, to voice all these concerns or to take a shot at them.
And it's still, it's possible that the neighbors still aren't happy at the end of that, and they still can come back and will still hear that again in terms of a, a site plan.
So you're not looking so much as a site plan as for the parties to sit down and come up with a list of restrictions that make it more acceptable to both parties. And those restrictions would be brought forth along with requests of zone change.
Okay.
I mean, we would essentially table it now. I'm just talking. I don't really know, Henry. But we would table it now and ask the two parties to get together to see if they could come up with a list of restrictions that, that would be more acceptable to both parties.
I think you're right, Mr. Man, Ms. Paycheck will let you weigh in on this procedurally, but if we were to just approve it and say, work out details on a site plan, the problem with that is if the site plan came back and it met our development standards, regardless if it satisfies neighbor concerns, if it's technically correct, we have to approve it. So if there's anything that we want tweaked beyond what's in the ordinance for development standards, the, the time to do that is now.
And, and director, you, you said to, to do anything with the road and streets is not our category. The change of directions, site one-way, that has to have its own.
Right. I think the discussion about restrictions would have to be limited to the property and its use landscaping, fencing, lighting, all of the things that have been mentioned here. The traffic is not something we could deal with.
That's right. The, the, the rectangle that's in the center of the block, when it's adjacent to residential on the majority of the sides, is always going to be a concern, that transition.
Other questions, comments?
If you could step up, sorry, to the mic.
You have to come up.
Yeah, we, to make sure we hear.
For the record.
Because we're on recording.
Okay, that's fine. We're, so we're asking for it to be rezoned commercial business. And then, yes, we, we can definitely come back with restrictions and a site plan and all of that. But it seems like we can't move forward with creating a site plan on a piece of land that is not yet the zone that, that we are asking for.
Well, one suggestion I think that Sam alluded to is perhaps you just look for the zone change upon the piece of property that fronts Martin Luther King and leave the back strip that backs up to the property's residential. But you might come forward with a request for a zone change on just a part of the property that faces.
Okay. Ken, is, and is that possible to divide, to divide it up like that? I don't know. Okay.
Since your, your handout that you presented has broken down into defined regions. I think, and we've incorporated it in this meeting, we can use that as a guideline on defining.
And that would be okay, too.
So you're going to then ask for a zone change. You're acceptable to ask for a zone change for only a portion of what you asked for previously?
It's possible.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's very possible. As a matter of fact, we've done characteristics of that at times before.
I'm looking out at the discussion that's going on with Mr. Wise.
I'm just saying, in this, you know, in the.
Sorry, will you step up?
You could both stand up there. That's all.
Are you, are you saying that we could table, table the discussion of the zone change for track eighteen? And then go on with recommending the zone change to commercial business for the two, for the two tracks that are on, that are fronting the road? Is that what you are asking? If that, can we do that?
If that's what you.
And table the conversation for zone, for track eighteen?
I think the suggestion was to only accept, not table anything, only accept the zone change on the bottom half closest to East Martin Luther King and deny the zone change on the track eighteen.
Now, tabling has timing implications in a lot of ways. For example, our November-December combination next meeting is not the, the fourth Thursday in November. It's been combined for early December, so we've delayed it in the calendar clock time. And, and so that delay is something that can, could affect what you're doing just because the next time we meet to discuss this would be at that point. Or it falls into January timeframe, and now we're getting into intervals of time making sure that we meet a comfortable timeframe response of some sort. So you see where we're standing. Tabling, it means we're not going to do anything.
To, to put it differently, we would be approving the zone change for whatever confined land we're talking about today. And then for the rest of it, that would be a separate application later.
I did, that would be a better, better way to do that.
And after you get together with the surrounding neighbors to accommodate their concerns, I guess.
Okay. Are we ready to?
Director, let me. Terry is right on what I was trying to head to. The ones that are adjacent to the street, a major thoroughfare street on the south side, those two ones could be commercial business, and I was leaving the rest of it as is.
Yes, that's what I was thinking as well. Yes.
So are we at a place where we can make that motion?
I believe so. I'll let, I'll leave it up to the legal counsel.
Are the lots, oh, zoned, not zoned that way, but divided that way now or?
Well, we saw the tracked map that was just.
They're, they're not subdivided. They're not.
I don't think it's, that, I don't think they're subdivided that way.
I think the engineer has to do.
Yeah, that was me.
The engineer has to do something. We've got to get a plat.
So is it, is it within our purview to rezone parts of a lot, Henry?
I think, I think it's novel for us. I'm looking through our zoning ordinance right now. I don't see anything that prohibits creating new split zoning. You might think about the wisdom of doing that for future users, but.
Or we could consider tabling it until we do more research. That is always the option. Because it's within the ninety days. Our next meeting is December tenth. It's within the ninety days.
Yeah, if it's within the timeframe, I think you're right. I'll step back and say table so it gets clear on the paperwork flows.
That, that's an easier option for us. And then the application could be for actually subdividing that parcel.
Well, let's, yes, and I agree. Let's see if that's, that interests for them.
For, for our regulations, it would be simpler if we subdivided the parcel and then approved a zone change only in one.
That's great.
And that would send it through, I mean, tech review, like that would send it through a whole other process.
Okay. I think that we're at a place where we're going to have to make a decision if we're going to approve, not approve, or table to allow for additional time to reflect on what change we might want to make with this zoning request.
So do you want me to explain to them that these are separate lots and redefine the zone change areas? So I'm Kendall Wise. I surveyed the property and created the zone change plat to define the area of the zone change. And so the question came up, the, the question was asked, are these separate tracks? And can we, regardless, we, one property could have separate zones on one property. But to answer your question, they are, they're three separate properties. And so what Ms. Paycheck is, is going to ask you to reconsider would be that this application, this zone change request applies only to lot number ten and lot number eleven, which are the two smaller lots with frontage on Martin Luther King. And at a later date, we'll just make a separate application with a better, a more well-defined plan for what would happen. plan for what would happen on the larger tract that's in the middle, in between the residential properties.
But I do want to point out that even on PVA and our website, they're not combined in its separate parcels. They're not, they do not have separate parcel numbers, so I don't think they are subdivided yet. It's the L-shaped lot that you all have in your packet.
They're separate, they're separate tracks of land. They're platted that way, regardless of what the PVA office has.
Okay.
Somebody's the final word there.
I'm me.
Thank you very much, Kendall. Thank you, Ms. Paycheck. We need to move on.
Yeah.
Let's make a decision as to what we're going to do and somebody needs to make a motion as to what direction we're going to go.
Do you want to? Want me to give a shot at this?
Either way, go.
I'd like to make a motion that we modify the, or agree with the modifications based upon the discussion we've had with here, such that we're only looking at those on the Martin Luther King that have in direct contact with Martin Luther King, which are in essence two lots and allow them to become CB category. The remaining requests of property, which is another segment, remains in its original zoning category. Now, do I need any other conditions, Henry, that you can tell?
That's, that's up to the commission, whether we wanted to talk about what your director suggested about fencing, any discussion of lighting. I heard a concern raised about building height restriction. Those might be things that we want to settle in a motion right now. I know we're talking about a parking lot, but.
Yeah. Well, I think the lighting and fencing would be not required restrictions, given that we're maintaining the property there as still resident, as still RM.
Do we need to open it back up still for public comment since we're changing the parameters?
They have spoken to the property as a whole, we're reducing the scope of it. You could open it up to the public's reaction.
Just asking the question.
It's a fair question. I'm not sure I heard any real concerns on the ones that were in direct contact.
I didn't either.
That's what I'm, and we'd have to open it back up just to ask the question. It would be a reasonable statement.
Okay, so we're going to go back into public session for any comments in regards to that modification of the request.
I know.
Sir?
Mr. Riley, you would probably have.
Thanks for bearing with us. Listen to you guys right now, I don't think you're ready to make a zone change, period. I think it needs to be tabled and figure out what's going on before you jump and put the cart in front of the horse. Don't do something, then you have to come back and regret it later on. There are several things that can be done with that piece of property back there. Urban renewal came in in 75 and they divided it up. That lot, that, look, Lot 18 should not even be there. Originally, the roads from Martin Luther King over there on Warner Street, pumping right to the middle. That's what it's supposed to have been back in 75, but somebody decided that that's too much property for them. So the city of Danville, in their wise wisdom, put a lot in there, 18. It's 97 feet wide. And they screwed everything at that particular time. There are several things that can be done. If you could take those roads and put it back in the middle of those two streets, those individuals that live behind on both the sides on Lot 18 could go ahead and purchase what's behind their house. Increase in the size of Lots 10 and 11, about 46 and a half, 46, 47 feet. You could do that. And then they could go ahead and build their buildings there. They could have a parking place in the back and that eliminate the whole problem. They will still have what they need. They will still get some money from what they paid for the lot, from individual people, from those five, five individual people's own property there. It's a win-win. So the zone change right now is not ready. It hasn't been cooked yet.
Now, and we've been talking the topic a long time. If you're done, I see Mark would like to make a comment.
Mark Morgan, Danville resident. I have a point of order that it's, this is a public section of, part of the meeting and we appreciate that this, this commission has done a good job on public involvement. But having neither a projected image nor a handout puts the public at a disadvantage at this point. So I think that making a decision at this time is premature because it does exclude the public effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion, I believe, on the table.
I would like to withdraw my motion, please.
Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to table it.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
And to explain, right, what we want to do in that context would be to come back with a proposal that reflects the discussion that happened here this morning, that the commission is probably, maybe amenable to the rezoning of the Martin Luther King facing properties. We need to see something else with the property behind.
And clarity on those two properties is what you're talking about.
Yes, and to have some conversation with the, with the neighbors as well as find something that does meet the win-win for, for everybody here.
Yep.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to table, please say yes or raise your hand.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank the audience, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your time with that. I believe we have another item that is in public hearing.
Yes.
And that is the Robert Scott and Kathy Hanks property. Would you like to?
Yes.
Introduce that to us?
Yes, and I am sorry about the PowerPoint. I do, I did forget to add those pictures to these two zone changes. So this zone change, Robert Scott and Kathy Hanks have applied for a zoning map amendment from single-family resident, or single-family residential R1A to agriculture on a 72-acre parcel at 1545 Wells Landing Road out in Danville. All of these pictures are in your staff report as well. And so a little history of this zone change. It was changed from Ag, from A1 to R1 back in 1986 and it never got developed into single-family lots. So it has pretty much been agriculture since 86, but never developed into their single-family homes. And I even think in our current ordinances now, if you don't use the zone change after five years, it reverts back or something like that. So in, in 86, that ordinance wasn't in place, but if it happened now, it would have reverted back to Ag. So I have kind of similar concerns about this one as well. The use is going towards agritourism, but it's kind of the same concerns with the fact that there is about 50 to 75 residents behind the entryway on the access point to Wells Landing Road. So the zone change from single-family to Ag is in line with the comp plan, both 2018 and 2025. But again, I do have concerns about access points because there are so many residents behind that only entry point. And again, all of these pictures are in your staff report, but that was my only concern was making sure that residents weren't further burdened.
Any questions from the commission for Ms. Gray? Who would like to speak in regards to this?
May I pass these out?
Sure.
Yes.
What are they?
So we are in public hearing. Others will need to be able to have access to what you're passing out. You may take mine.
Here, you can use this one. Okay.
Please. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Robert Hanks. This is in reference to property of 1545 Wells Landing Road here in Danville. And.
You'll need to move the microphone or yourself closer to the microphone.
Okay, is that better, ma'am?
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. Just thought you'd give you a little background on kind of what my intentions and the design for the property. Just briefly about me, I was born in Danville. I left the area when I was 17, become a chemical engineer. I've worked 38 years in refining for Ashland in Marathon. And my claim to fame, if there ever was one, is I completed a $1.4 billion project that was the largest sustainable diesel plant in the United States. I did that along the West Coast. I had 4,000 people reporting to me. Biggest thing I've ever been involved with. I, perhaps due to that project, I had a stroke in 2022, a major stroke, and had a hard time walking and had a hard time riding a bicycle. But my therapist said, set big goals, come on. And so I decided I was going to bike across the country. I lived in California at the time and I was going to bike across the country and raise money for Big Brothers, Big Sisters in the mountain region. So I put my back tire in the Pacific Ocean at Santa Monica Pier and started heading this way. And I actually biked through Danville, my hometown, on the route, Route 76, which goes through Harrisburg, but I took the detour and I came through Danville. And on that detour, I decided I wanted to move back to Danville, Kentucky and leave California and retire and buy, buy a farm and develop a boutique bourbon business. So with that in mind, I graduated from the UK Distiller Certificate Program in 2025. Now, slide three. My farm is 130 acres along Wells Landing Road. I currently raise beef cattle, horses, and wine grapes. My goal is to be a model of sustainability for Kentucky. I have 13 KVA solar. I have 100% rainwater capture on one of my barns. And my plans in 2026 is to grow enough sunflowers that I can convert the oil to diesel fuel and power all my tractors. That's kind of my dream. Now, further along the dream is I want to construct a very small craft distillery, one still inside of a barn. It's, it's kind of like a Burger King of bourbon. In other words, have it your way. You pick the mash bill, you pick the storage time, and I take care of the rest. I'll grow the grains on site, make the bourbon, and store the barrel product on site. Now, just to give you context, this is a tiny place. This is like Moonshiners on Discovery Channel. It's about half a barrel a day. And note that Wilderness Trail is about 200 barrels a day, so they're about 400 times my size, so this is tiny. I'm entirely self-financed, using my limited retirement savings, although I'm not eating baloney yet, but I'm doing okay. I have my capital purchases are pending. However, I recently completed a barn with, which has other intentions. I have zero intentions to create a bar. Perhaps in four years, I might consider a tasting room, but that, that has yet to be decided. I have, I have no immediate intentions to have tours, again, perhaps in four years, but nothing now. Now, as she had mentioned about the traffic, so I don't anticipate much additional traffic. You know, based on my economics, if I have one customer to make a barrel every two days, that suffices the economics to support the facility, believe it or not. And I'm very rigorous on this. So, you know, I'm saying maybe one additional car every two days. And with the grains grown on site, there's not going to be traffic, truck traffic to bring in grains. Construction is in-house, which will be done by me and my sons, so we're not going to have construction traffic down the road. The nearest home is 400 feet from the still site, or 400 yards, excuse me. And I won't be trucking off any of the stillage waste. I have cows on my property that I plan to feed with the whole stillage produced by the site. And again, there are no stormwater impacts. Rainwater capture is on the site and I capture 100%. Just some of the things that I would be willing to do for the county or for the city is I've always wanted to like, see if the farm could be used for like a fall arts and crafts fair or a fall festival for the county. I'd be willing to allow my farm to be used for that. I'm also willing to work with the local schools on farmer or engineering education. You know, when I was a kid, there was a, there was a teacher, his name was Don Hoffman at Danville, at Danville High School. And he inspired me to be an engineer and I would like to continue that. So I'm willing to work with the local schools, you know, have tours to talk about engineering or farming. And Plan B, assuming that you guys would not approve it, is I will head down the route of a winery. I have about 80 grapevines on site and I'll be adding 200 in the next few months. And just, just one other thing to note is the still, even in Kentucky, even though this is very small and private, it is still regulated by the TTB, the Alcohol, Tobacco and Tax Bureau. So it, they still have primacy over the site or over the, the operation. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Do any commissioners have any questions for this gentleman? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this zone change request?
Does, does the change to Ag allow for the growth of the distillery business? Or does, is that, the question is just, is going to Ag the proper zone change for?
We're just discussing zone change at this, at this time. So we're only, we're not discussing the development plan at all. But it allows for agritourism, so, oops, sorry, Ag, the Ag district.
Agritourism, then, okay, okay, so that would still suffice.
That's an acceptable use in the Ag zone.
Yes, yeah, but not in the single-family zone.
All right, I just wanted to make sure it was, we didn't change it and then put him in a situation where he had to come back and request something else.
No, no, I don't believe he has to come back for anything.
Good. That was my question as well.
Any other questions or comments by the commissioners? Anything further from Ms. Gray?
Nothing, nothing from me.
I guess we're ready then for a motion.
I just wanted to make one note on this last question. It looks to me like there might be a conditional use permit required for craft distilling.
Agritourism, okay. So maybe you'll have to go to the BOA, but y'all won't see him.
That would be one additional step.
Yeah, that does not have to be addressed, no.
Right. So I'd like to move to approve the zone change as proposed in front of us, zoning back to Ag.
Can I get a second? Thank you, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Madam Chair, if we might have just one or two justifications about this, that it's in conformity with the comp plan.
I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Consistent with the future land use map, consistent with our stated goals and objectives, it's consistent with the comp plan and what, both the current and the proposed comp plan.
There's support in the comp plan for agribusiness. It conforms with the surroundings.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
If you would please add that language, I'll modify the motion to include that. Thank you, Henry.
Thank you, Henry. All those in favor? Thank you, that is approved. Okay. Further comments? Let's see, further topic under public hearings is the comp plan.
Yes.
Ms. Gray, would you like to lead us off with that?
Yes, so the 2025 Danville-Boula County Comp Plan was introduced in the August meeting, was open for public comment from August, the end of August up until September 17th. Then at the September meeting, we allowed for more public comment and we made three amendments, I believe. And those amendments were made and are available on the online version. And then I also added, per Henry's suggestion, two, three additional maps, one for collector streets and one for city streets. And additionally, worked with Josh, the city engineer, to get an updated city streets proposed kind of expansion. So those three maps are added in addition to the amendments we put on in the September meeting, but it is ready for adoption.
And that revised comp plan is actually electronically available?
Yes, yes. So this is the most updated version, but with those amendments that we made from Mark Morgan and Melanie Thornberry, those are available on the online version.
And.
So as we are, as we are in public session, and this would be our time for further public comments about the comprehensive plan, would anyone like to make further comments? I know we've had the opportunity, but I want to make sure. Comments from the commissioners?
Just the question, we tabled this at our last meeting.
Correct.
With the expressed thing to advertise for comments from other organizations and adjacent.
And those were sent out as well, yes.
Okay, have we received anything?
No, we haven't received anything. And it was also brought to my attention that we. And it was also brought to my attention that we will send out notices of adoption after it is adopted today as well, to the surrounding counties and the RPC. So those two things are done, and we have.
So I just, I think somewhere in our records today, we should record that we did advertise and we got no response.
Yes, no response, no comments or anything from surrounding counties or the RPC.
And since we tabled it, did we officially untable it or just bring it back? Did we vote on it?
I think we have to untable it and then move for adoption.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I move to untable the discussion of the comp plan?
Okay.
I'll second.
And all those in favor of that? Now, are we ready for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the comp plan as reflected on the current online version.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes or raise your hand. Thank you. I just feel like I need to say that many people have worked on this to make it an updated comprehensive plan, future land use, and the involvement of the public. I'm very proud of the involvement of the public in this activity. So thank you to those who spent lots of time working on this comp plan. All right, so then, let's see, the next thing on our agenda is the commission will consider a zoning ordinance text amendment, and I am going to leave this now with.
Yes.
Henry, or Mr. Henry and Ms. Gray.
Yes, we are so close. No, we are so close to being done, guys, I promise.
It's all right. We'll take the time we need.
So, yes, we are up for considering a zoning ordinance text amendment to increase the minimum lot size in the agricultural zone from fifty thousand square feet to two hundred seventeen, like, two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred square feet by amending four point three point five. And that is just one acre to five acres. We had brought this up in the advisory committee, so we had talked about this, I believe, two months ago. And there is a couple adjustments on this. So I, we are adjusting the minimum lot size from fifty thousand to two hundred seventeen thousand roughly, and then adding setback line to the lot width, and then adding the lot frontage, adjusting it to a hundred feet to, the intent is to decrease the flag lots in the agriculture zone. So that is what we are considering today.
Can you talk a little bit about the justification for this change?
I think the justification is the comp plan that we just adopted. So the intention is to densify the city limits and keep agriculture, agriculture, protect the infrastructure that is out there, and, you know, ensure that the utilities are, I mean, right now, we're having an issue with Parksville not signing off on some things because they're at capacity. So issues like that, I think this solves. And also, in your packets, I've included the amendments, but I've also included a KRS statute to talk about this because per KRS, the ag zone is five acres. So I think this kind of does several things, but I think the intention is to abide by the comp plan that we just adopted.
All right, Neil, I just, I know, I went back and found the same thing you did, that the state regulations is five.
Yeah.
This county went to one.
Right, yes.
And they're allowed to do that.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So we're not reflecting that we did something wrong.
No, no, not at all, no, not at all. It would just, that is already at the state level. And I tried to look at the history of when it went back to one acre, but even Lisa said it was before her time, so.
It's been very, it's been an extremely long time.
Yeah.
Because even when I moved in in eighty-four, it was already done.
But I think we now are having utility issues where, again, like Parksville won't sign off on stuff because they're at capacity for the water, so it's a twofold issue.
Is this not something that was requested by the county?
Yes, it was requested by the county on my first day. So it was requested since I've been here, and this has been in discussions for four months. So it's requested by city and county, so.
Well, in perspective here, this is quite a change, going back to a larger one. And the first feeling I have is, what about the things we're doing in between? What about things have been doing out there, thinking about doing? And when is the transition of this thing based upon the vote that we're suggesting to do today effective tomorrow, that it would be five acres?
No, I believe we'd have to go to Boyle County Fiscal Court and Danville City Commission to get approval from both of those bodies before it's actually approved.
Yes, I want to make sure that you said that out loud, so we're not confused here. There's, we're not the final say.
No, not at all.
We're just recommending it.
This is just the first.
We're recommending a change to our ordinance, which has to go to the legislative body.
Yes, yeah.
Correct, in that category. When we go to the five acres, does that preclude the R one, just residential, single-family dwelling from being existing there, or is it called RR category?
No, there is no RR category, I believe, there's only ag.
That was replaced, exactly.
Yes, yeah.
That was, that's what that ends up being.
I mean, anybody in the county can do a zone change, but this is just for the agricultural zoning district, so.
And a residence is allowed in the ag zone?
Yeah.
Yes, they are allowed in the ag zone. Let me see, I hadn't, I got lost in the way the paperwork. You know, when you start reading regulations, you start looking at numbers, it takes a little while to come back and prospectively sit on there. So those people, applicants that have converted over to, they have plats? Or where do, where does people that have applied, they haven't built a house yet, and they have submitted a plat? They can continue to do the one acre?
In my opinion, yes, because, you know, that was a different text amendment. And if we approve this today, it's not approved until there's other, the two other bodies approve it as well. I mean, so they, that was pre.
But it's not likely it would retroactively change all things that are already approved.
Okay, and so if for some reason they never build on the property, because there's a time limit for building on that, would it then fall into five acres?
No, I think it's appropriate to build on the one acre that is already subdivided, because that was a subdivision.
We're not forcing lots to become bypass. I just, I want to state it out loud, so there's no surprises on here.
Well, and it is consistent with what were our objectives in the comp plan, to try to encourage construction inside the urban service boundaries and not outside.
And.
Limiting density.
And Director, I missed it, you know how I was listening here. The reason that we're going to five acres is because the state said that.
No, 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 not at all, no. This is a suggestion from the county and the city and the advisory committee. We've had this discussion just to, again, densify the city limits and stay inside of those city limits and incentivize people to develop inside and not, you know, split up acreage and like, create subdivisions within the district. I think that's one thing that I've seen so far since being here is just, you know, giving one acres, it allows for faux subdivisions that we're not, I mean, it's just.
Well, you could have a subdivision, though, under this category, they just have to have five-acre lots.
Right.
That's what it says, it could still be a subdivision.
Yeah, just a higher minimum.
Mr. Collier, with regard to the state statute, Ms. Gray is right to bring it to your attention, but it brings up the distinction between agriculture zone development standards, which is what we're changing today, and what the statute describes as an agricultural use. And you can have agricultural zone property that doesn't have a statutory agricultural use.
And I appreciate you stating that out loud, because again, terminology here, it's part of that. When you weave yourself down, it's not as broad scoping as what could be concerned, could be a concern. I just want to make sure that we're in that same feeling. Talking through the words are very carefully set up, and therefore a good purpose and a good reasoning. Now, you did the lot width and the lot frontage. I appreciate you picking those up. I thought that was something that might make sense to do. I don't recall any other area category in the standard that probably should be better, should be done.
No, I think, again, in doing, in changing the lot width and frontage, it just creates more uniformity and kind of cancels out the flag lots that we see, so that was my intention.
As this is in public session, do we ask for any public comment at this time about this change? This zoning ordinance text amendment? Would anybody like to speak in favor or opposition to it? Come on up.
Mark Morgan, Danville resident. I appreciate this, but I think this is an extremely important change, this amendment. We have lived in and own property in Forkland since nineteen eighty-one, and the character of that unique part of our county will be improved by this and preserved by this, so we strongly support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in regards to this? If not, are there any other comments or questions?
I would like one other comment I discovered, and I apologize, before we got, it doesn't impact the conversation on here. Should I be any concerns that by requiring a five acre, is there a chance that I'm also driving somebody to not move into the county? That's what we're trying to not do? And not move in anywhere, including cities, Danville, Wood Parable, Junction City, just because it's, I got to buy five acres now?
In the agricultural zone?
Agricultural.
That's only agricultural.
Just in.
I don't think we can make that determination based off this.
I don't think we can make the determination, but.
All right, any other questions or comments? About this zoning ordinance text amendment? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
I'd like to move to approve the zoning ordinance text amendment to increase the minimum lot size from one acre to five acre and amending section four point three point five.
Also.
Mr. Nola, would you like to state a brief justification for this amendment?
This brings us consistent with state regulations and returns our lot size back to where we were previously in the past, also consistent with the objectives of the comp plan.
I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor, please raise your hand or say yes.
Yes.
I, no vote.
I'm sorry?
I'm a no vote.
I think we may have a no vote here as well.
No vote.
Okay, so one, two, three. I'm not sure that we.
Can we see those hands again? Yeah, what was that? Can we get a count?
No call vote?
Yeah, call for the noes.
Call for the noes, please.
Three.
That's what passes.
So in that case, do I vote?
Can we see the yes vote again?
It's not tied, it's not a tie vote.
It's not a tie vote.
It's not a tie vote, you don't have to vote.
All right, thank you. Thank you, I haven't had this happen before, but I'll listen again. Okay, so it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The yeses were four.
Okay, thank you, I, thank you.
Sorry.
Yeses were four and noes were three.
Okay, yes for four and no for three, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right.
With the chair not voting.
Okay, okay, perfect. Well, it passes with four to three.
Yes.
To one.
All right, so the next is a proposed update to subdivision regulations.
Yes, this is the final one, I promise. So this is an amendment to the subdivision regulations. I'm just adding, or I'm proposing to add the sentence, "All utilities, comma, including communication and electrical systems, shall be placed underground." Appurtenances, sorry, to these systems may be accepted. And that's just kind of, so this amendment started with the development on Baughman Ave. They are, they elected to do above-ground electric poles in a new development, and there was no regulation mandating that they do underground electric. We were told it's a sourcing issue, but I think this requires, this, I think for new development, this is a good step in the right direction in requiring underground electric poles. So I think that's where this came from.
What you're saying, then, if somebody really, really, really wants to have poles, they're going to have to come in for a variance.
Absolutely, yes. And it is, that is why I say may be accepted, because if it is a restriction to the subdivision or if it's a reasonable request due to sourcing, I think we can allow for that. But I think that should be a requirement, not an exception.
Did you get any information from, directly from the utilities?
Yes, not directly from the utilities, but in tech review, we had talked about it being a sourcing issue that they couldn't get transformers.
Kentucky Utilities or inter-county energy?
No, I have not gotten any.
So we didn't get a document from there?
No, but, I mean, we just want, we, me and Josh had discussed requiring new development be underground because.
I really liked your addition to the last sentence there in part D.
Yes. And there, we tried to find something else in the subregs to mandate that they have underground electric, but it's all recommendations, or it's, it would be nice if it was underground, but it's not a mandate.
And I believe it's, what you're saying is everything in the subdivision, not just from the pole in the backyard to your house.
Correct, yes, electric and communication systems.
As we are in public session, any comments in regards to this proposed update to the subdivision regulations?
Kendall Wise from Bannage Engineering. I can just see some issues getting into a subdivision because a lot of the, a lot of the utilities are overhead along the highways. And so obviously, existing utilities would be grandfathered into a neighborhood that was created under them. But too often, a utility line, an electric, overhead electric, might be on the other side of the roadway, and it's just not feasible in a lot of cases to bore under a highway, bring underground electric onto a site. So you would have a certain amount of overhead that has, that would, you know, the common sense thing, even if you wanted an underground electric system in your subdivision, you would still probably bring that overhead across the street, overhead to a pole, which would be on your property. So, I mean, technically, you're saying there's, you know, you can't create any new overhead. I mean, there's just some little hiccups like that.
Yeah.
I don't know how lenient the rules.
That's where I got into maybe accepted category.
You create rules, you have to enforce them, so just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a comment about this?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just, with regard to the sense of the second sentence, talking about those appurtenances and creating some wiggle room, I wonder if the last word, and I talked to the director about this, might be changed from accepted to accepted, E-X-C-E-P-T-E-D. And that would refer to the process that we used for that sidewalk this morning, granting an exception, so. It's my suggestion.
That would like, that automatically defines that we're making an exception, yes.
Comments or questions to be issued?
It's, if we get into the situation of the, what our speaker was talking about, Director, are you in a position to make a decision that meets the criteria?
I believe so, and especially, I think, changing the word from accepted to exceptions. I mean, I am understanding, you know.
That's fine.
So.
Are we ready to have a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the wording as presented. Is there any other?
With the.
As amended by Henry.
As a change?
Yeah, with the word, the last word changed, yeah, to exceptions.
Changing, excuse me, yeah. X, the A C to an E X category.
Can I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say yes.
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved. New business, do we have new business from the advisory committee?
Nothing today.
What is it? Personnel committee? Other new business?
That was a lot of business today, so I think we're good.
It was. Any announcements for today?
Do you want to announce the meeting times?
Oh, yes, so we do have, we combined, last meeting, we approved to combine the November and December meeting to accommodate Thanksgiving and Christmas schedules. So our new meeting for those two months will be December tenth at nine AM.
And the tech meeting moves to a different time?
Yes, I don't have that in front of me, but yes, the tech review meeting is moved to, one second, to November twenty-sixth. And I will send out all those updated dates, including deadline to file, tech review, and all of those.
There, it's November twenty-sixth.